Josh, is Joe Shai here?
Here.
Mike Carson.
Leona Sandra Hunter. And Mayor Smith.
Also present. So grateful to each of our council members for your participation this evening. Now we will proceed now with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now proceed with our mayor's report. You know, I have several items. I'll start with one that wasn't printed and that pleased to inform you council that a day long awaited eastern maple rosebud plant, a tree, has arrived and which I know the council selected. And so we will initiate the processes of getting planted at the earliest opportunity. Going to carefully measure the site on the west side of, north of the post office and try to see if we can place the trees in such a way that if future development happens, say with sidewalk or parking access is required, that we can avoid the trees.
Are they going to be protected enough when we're having May Day here soon to have small trees, brand new?
That's a very good question. They're only five to six feet tall. We were going to stake them and try to shore them up with some form of rope, but that might not be sufficient if you have lots of people.
I think John's also going to put some fence around them, some wire fencing around them to keep the deer and stuff from trying to eat them. So that should keep little cats off of them.
That was new. So that's about the best response I can give you.
I just didn't know if we wanted to maybe pull it off until after May Day.
We could do that, I think.
Just to be on the safe, I mean, I knew we want to showcase them as far as, you know, because that's our new street or...
They'll be so small, but probably not much for things to admire.
Yeah.
But they're in boxes.
Well, they're out of the boxes now because they're not supposed to stay in the boxes. I don't know how long, they said not to leave them too long before we plant them. I don't know how long to keep them in that state.
How is the root ball? Did you, I haven't seen them.
I haven't seen them. I only saw the boxes, so.
John has told us.
Yeah, or you could burlap the root ball. It's only what, three weeks away, maybe?
All right, we'll take it under careful oversight. You did that with Congress?
Do you still want Mike to dig the holes or do you have somebody to do that?
No, John will do that. They're not that huge, thanks.
Oh, but they're not big enough?
No, pretty tiny, I guess.
He felt he could do it and it wasn't that good.
Appreciate that. Okay, I remember number one, actually. Update on our income survey. Economometrica, it's, I'm good to their word. They are pressing ahead quickly. Their objective is to complete it by June 1st, which would be quite a feat, but completing it and hopefully getting the desired outcome may be two different things. But as you recall, we need 80% of our community participation. And so we're getting the word out. It's on the city's website. We have Samantha Love-Lady with us, our new...
I can make sure I know that in paper.
Perfect. We appreciate your presence here tonight, too. So I would say that we're coming along nicely with the rollout. Okay, number two, report on the '09 Lewis County Economic Development Funding approval. Friday of last week, I was approached by county commissioners who expressed supportive commentary to the city's request for $25,000 grant funding to cover the costs of our comprehensive plan completion, which is first required by the state of Washington. So on Monday, the commission met and Matt Maudioshi, who you're acquainted with, has been very supportive of the community, like the commissioners, have passed and approved that. So it's now official. We will be able to pay completely for that without using city funding. So that's a real benefit. Number three, update on the citywide cleanup. I can report to the council that pursuant to your authorization, I did authorize the payment of $400 to the cleanup committee. And so we're setting that in motion, the acquisition of two bins, large ones that residents can use between April 15th and April 20th pursuant to the guidelines set out in the flyers that hopefully you've seen. So we're doing the due diligence that you've asked that we do to support that citizen and resident-driven activity. So I just want to let you know that we're on top of that. And I think there should be an outstanding event to clean up.
Yeah, the scrapper ladies are running around town picking up scrap already.
Yeah, that's great.
I've been one of them. We've already taken out a ton of scrap.
Is that right?
And the funds that have gotten, come from the proceeds of turning that scrap in, have gone to the beautification committee for plants and forest and different things like that. So it's on its way. And I personally, with Judy, spent eight hours going around those flyers and we've got more going to be sent out.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And thank you for mentioning that because we were discussing this morning with John Flatt, our public works employee, who noted that we have some amount, I don't know exactly how much, but none of it has been surplus, just scrap metal at our waste treatment plant. He'd like to, I've given authorization, I didn't feel that we needed council approval because none of it materially surfaced, to donate that if you're still picking up scrap metal.
Thank you.
And so we knew that the money's generated from it could go into the beautification of the city, so.
$168 has been donated to the beautification committee.
Is that right? Wow. Okay, this is excellent. So would you mind getting in touch with Jill to work out the...
John was reaching out to Judy already, so I think...
Okay. All right, next item, four, Lions Club Easter egg hunt. The appropriate permits and paperwork has been done, so we're supportive of this event. They've gotten their own insurance. Correct me if I'm overstating the situation, but they work closely with the city and they're gratifying to have that effort involved in that event. And so it'll be on April 20th at 11:00 a.m. and I noted you already put it there, but thank you.
Yeah, so we'll wait in there again next week as well.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, I added another talking point for council's information. We had a teleconference with Gary Cooper and John Hinton. If any of you have been in the city long enough to remember him, he was with Gray &amp; Osborne, the engineering company that did some of our contracting work about 10 years ago. And he has been working for several years to finish our shoreline report. And it is on the cusp of being completed. And it's a mandated ecological report. And so is it every seven years it has to be?
I'm not sure. It's actually a regulation, shoreline regulations, the Shoreline Master Program.
So when that's completed, then we'll be in compliance. And they've agreed that because it was close to the next timetable for renewal, that they would meld the two together, so we'll be good for our...
Several years, I thought.
Five to seven, I'm just... So that is no small feat. And John Hinton, the former engineer who was working with the city, is greatly relieved to have finally finished it and report that. And that's not an understatement or overstatement.
We were going to mention about that, that there will be some public hearings, at least one public hearing coming up through the planning committee. This, the shoreline thing goes through the planning committee first, and they do the public hearing, and then they make a recommendation to council for approval once they've done everything, not everything done. So you guys will see it after the planning committee finishes with it.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's important, the planning committee is going to be wrestling with that. But it's important because it's going to impact development of the city, particularly the Brandon Milton project just south of your restaurant. As you're aware, because his property directly impacts the shoreline of Olaqua, which is encompassed within that report, so it's going to be significant, have an impact, but it won't, I think, be a negative impact on Mr. Milton's project. Some issues, we won't get into that at the moment, but you'll have to address, but I think you can. With that, I did want to make mention that I know residents have expressed interest and support, and council have deliberated on getting some school zone signs. You will recall that we did homework in which we discovered that the Washington State Department of Transportation is responsible for that signage, working with the Castle Rock School District. And they informed us, as we told you, that it would cost $20,000 to $25,000 approximately to install the types of signage that would be adequate. And so we've spoken with him again, and there is grant funding out there, but the issue that I continue to struggle with is the long-term maintenance of that signage. So even though we could possibly get grant funding for it, it is an issue that we'd have to wrestle with the long-term maintenance of it because the state doesn't cover that element of it. So I just felt like I should keep the council apprised of that project. And if there are individuals who would be interested in assisting the city in applying for the grant funding, feel free to exercise that opportunity. Have a comment here?
Are you going to keep talking about maybe on how you could get the money maybe the next budget year to maintain it? A school zone seems to be kind of important for the darlings.
I think the council would certainly consider that, although it'd be a challenge because it's one of those unknown, it's an unfunded mandate thing that you embrace, but you don't have a clear idea of how much it might cost to maintain it and to operate it. So, yeah, but that's a thought.
What kind of signs are you talking about?
Yeah.
What'd you hear?
Flashing, flashing signs. Yeah, nothing fancy, just like what was up there before.
Yeah. So...
Even if we just had a sign that said, you know, between the hours of this and that, you know...
That would be very inexpensive to do and we could do that, but as far as having the flashing...
At least it'd be something that people could be held accountable for, having a sign like that.
Well, I know I've spoken to a number of the mothers who are taking children there, and maybe that's a group, that if there were an outreach to them, maybe they would collectively come together and support that.
How many kids actually walk to the building? Are they all little enough that they are drop-offs right there at the building? Do we know how many kids are crossing at all?
I think it's the bus stop that stops there and picks up kids and drops kids off, the older kids. I don't think it's necessarily the preschool kids per se, but because that has been a bus stop location, that there are kids that, a lot of kids that get dropped off there are numbers. I have no idea. I'll check into that.
How old are the kids that are getting dropped off?
Elementary through high school.
Well, you know, it's Centurion, it's the kids that do the crossing with the stop and walkout signs and everything. So could we get anything going where the older kids actually have the stop signs and stop the traffic for the younger ones to cross? Could we do something like that?
I have no idea. I think that would be something that the school would... Those are things to check into. If you guys want to put that topic on as a discussion item for another meeting, then we can look into some of that stuff.
I talked with a gentleman at DOT yesterday, as you probably well know, because he said he was going to catalog me for talking to him. But anyway...
But you weren't the only one.
Right. Well, you can apply for a TIB grant. He said, that was his advice. But that takes, you have to apply by June of this year, and then you will be on 2020's agenda to get, if you can get the grant. But he definitely suggested the flashing light and the school zone 21-hour thing. And I asked him why they ever took it down to begin with. And he said he got complaints from people because there wasn't a school there, but yet there's always been a school bus stop there at that intersection. And a lot of kids aren't in that area all the time. So anyway, so now, like Ken said, $20,000, $25,000, so it needs to be applied for by June, I think between June and August.
It's not inconceivable. And I would tell you, the county commissioners indicated to me that the funding that we got, the '09 commercial development fundings, would not preclude us from applying for additional TIB grant funding. In some situations it might, but in this case, I don't think it would, so.
He just said, you could try and see if it worked. So it would be a good thing to get that school zone back there, in my opinion.
So I think in the long term, this is just the start, the redevelopment of the school in our city.
Wasn't A Street a TIB grant? Did one of you apply for that one?
Yes.
How to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe you'd be a resource person.
Yeah, if we can, we can talk to engineering about getting a grant for that.
Also, I was under the impression, he told me the state was responsible for doing the maintenance on that.
That's not what he told me yesterday on the phone. He said the city would have to have a plan to maintain it ourselves.
Okay, because before it was the state's responsibility to take care of that.
I don't know if it depends on who's buying it, because I think in the past, well, I think it might have something to do with who paid for it. I'm not sure. But that's what he said to me, was that the city would have to do it.
But secondary thought that occurred to me is that I think some outreach to the school district, maybe that would be something that would be negotiated, maybe?
Yeah, because he said the school district had no part of it, didn't want any part of it, so.
They don't want it. It'll be part of it, but it's up there.
That's what he said.
Yeah, they don't because it comes out of their budget, but...
Yeah, if there was a child injured there, I have a feeling that the skilled attorney could get around that. So, but anyway, well, there, I just wanted to keep you briefed on those events and thank people who reach out and are helping. So that concludes the mayor's report. So let's then proceed with council. Any thoughts council would like to share?
I'd like to give major credos to John, our amazing maintenance man. He was out today in the rain with a shovel, digging a ditch from D Street down to my property, and that water is just running through there now. Cleaned out the culvert at my end, cleaned, he didn't even know there was a culvert up on D Street, but he found that, so with my wet man.
Thank you, ma'am.
He's out there with his shovel, doesn't he?
That's fantastic. So you know, every year, our employees get an employee evaluation. And so I completed that for 2019, and our employees have received a very high praise from the mayor, and so I don't express that lightly. We do have outstanding city employees. So thank you for highlighting that. All right, then let's do any other council thoughts. So let's proceed with the approval of our official agenda for tonight's...
I have some information on the stick pile if I can share it when I get there.
Okay. Well, would you want to do it now in the council report, Mike?
I can do it at the end of the council report. I'm just getting off the freeway now.
Oh, excellent. Well...
You can do it at the end of the comment, council comment section if you want.
If you'd like, Mike, you could do it at the end of the elected official comment period.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, excellent. I don't have any adjustments to the agenda as it is currently written, so we'll await council action. Is there someone else has a modification?
I made a motion that we approve the agenda for 4/11/2018 as written.
Okay, Mr. Daly submitted a motion to approve the this evening's agenda as written. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion is carried. Now we'll go to the approval of our previous city council meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the city council meeting on 3/28/2018 as written.
Okay, Mrs. Hunter submitted a motion to approve the minutes from the previous city council meeting as noted and as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shai. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, now we'll proceed with the official voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of April 2019 in the amount of $55,217.21.
Okay, Mr. Shai submitted a motion to approve the vouchers totals as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now we are pleased to have the sheriff's deputy report. Let's turn the podium over to the deputy.
Good evening. Kevin Amelbertson with the Lewis County Sheriff's Office. Jill told me I had to wear a tie tonight.
She did?
No, she didn't. For our May 2019, the basic statistics, we had 400... Oh, nice.
You said May.
My gosh. Brave ahead of the game. March was 490 citizen contacts. We had a total of 14 calls for the month. Three of those calls were while we were actually scheduled on shift. The other 11 were off shift that we just responded to. We had 26 traffic stops and only one arrest. So either people are being good or I don't know.
We'll take the latter.
Yeah. And we're, nothing, nothing major to report. We're getting ready for May Day, obviously, to make sure we have enough coverage down here for that event, so I'm curious to see. I know we have some, maybe some things that are going to get brought up on that to see if they...
Yes, they'll be on our agenda here shortly.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that report. All right, well, with that, let's proceed with our city business. And you'll note that item number one is the council to consider nominations for the vacant city council position number one that was created upon the resignation of Judy Castello as member of the city council. So you will note that state law governs such actions and that it's subject to the will of the city council to fill such vacancies. And it would be ideal, I think, if we had Mike present with us. Mike, can you still hear us?
Yes, I'm just getting by the school right now.
Okay.
Tell us a story.
Let's see. Stretch and some jumping jacks. Well, I can report that we did invite individuals to express an interest in filling the position and doing so by contacting the city hall or members of the council. And I can report that we did have two individuals who expressed interest in filling the position, which was most pleasing.
I thought Tiki Shav was going to...
Yeah, she had some issues that she had to take under careful consideration and withdrew her interest. But that doesn't mean that down the road, she may not really consider an opportunity to serve in the community. So, yes.
If you don't mind, there was one additional thing I thought of after I handed these out, just to let you know, council has 90 days to fill the position. So these are the ones that have come up since the last council meeting. However, you don't have to fill it at this council meeting. It's just on the agenda if you guys want to do it, if you're considering it, if there's someone else you know or talk to that has expressed interest and you want to consider them, you can wait to do this. But just so you know, you don't have to do it this week. I did put that information in there, but you certainly can.
Perfect timing, all right. No speeding tickets?
I never turn on the...
Hello, sheriff?
Yeah, don't answer that question. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And certainly, the council does have 90 days, but I think not as much as we have.
Thank you.
Expressed interest in it. I would encourage the council to demonstrate some decisiveness in it. I can report to you that the two individuals who've informed us of their interest, one is Lois Botson, who's seated with us in the audience, and the other is Mr. Randall Hall, who's also present with us this evening. I personally can vouch for both of these individuals, and they're community-minded, honest, and have demonstrated willingness to participate productively in our community. They have attributes that I would suggest that we always look for, and that is people-friendly, even-tempered, open-minded, thoughtful, well-spoken, honest, and dedicated. So with my sense, either one of these two individuals would reflect those attributes. So I would, I will stop talking. And as you know, it's a simple matter of nominating an individual, and it's up to the seconding and voting process to see how it plays out. So I will turn the time over to the council.
I will nominate Randy Hall for position on the city council, position number one in the city council.
Okay, that's good. Well, you've heard... Well, you've heard a motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to nominate Randy, Randall Hall to fill vacancy number one in the Vader City Council. Do we have a second for that motion?
Can I nominate? I'd like to nominate Lois Botson.
We've got a motion on the table, so unfortunately, we have to add the motion. So if there's no second, then we proceed. But is there a second?
I spent some time with Mr. Hall last week, and I found him to be an excellent candidate. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Now, council discussion.
I know Randy and Kathy, just from work, they're great people. Lois is a great person. I'm up in the air. I think that they both do an excellent job. I think Lois has been on this side of the table a lot, so.
I was leaving my house the other day, and the sheep came running over, and they lined up on the fence. And then a block over, all these chickens were lined up on the fence, and I'm going, what the heck is going on? And I look in my mirror, and there's Randy and his wife picking up garbage as they're walking through town, feeding the animals. And I thought, what an awesome thing to, I mean, I don't have the opportunity to walk around town as much as I'd like to. And so it just hit me.
It's funny, my dogs are outside there at the corner of my yard looking towards Randy and Kathy.
Well.
I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, but can't we have more than one nomination at a time for this?
Well, historically, if you know how many individuals have indicated an interest, council can simply make the nomination. So you have that option, but.
Lois Botson nominated?
No.
Well, no, Leona was saying she wanted to nominate Lois and.
She submitted a motion in this regard, sets in motion.
But I wasn't sure a nomination was a motion. I'm sorry, I'll be quiet, I'll let you guys handle it. But I thought that this worked differently than a regular motion. I thought you could nominate as many people as you nominate and make a second. Then if someone else wants to nominate, make a second, then you can vote between them. But maybe I'm wrong. Sorry.
I don't think there's a right or wrongness to it. It's just the approach. So.
Well, if it's okay, then I'm nominating Lois Botson. So we can have more than one out.
She's exercising. So we've had two nominated. It wasn't in the form of a motion, but we still have a motion before you. So, but we've had two nominations. So from my perspective, Robert's rules of order are a little vague on the topic, but.
We need a second for the nomination. This nomination needs to be seconded in order to be valid.
Yeah, I could second, I could second, you know. Lois too, that's the thing. They're both outstanding, outstanding individuals.
That's why it's harder to vote sometimes. But, okay. Well, shall we put it to a vote?
I was actually kind of hoping that, you know, we're really early into the nomination process anyway. Really kind of hoping there'd be some more people coming into the.
Yeah, but it is what it is. I think you're.
With all of our, with all the people that were at the last meeting, I thought, oh, yeah.
Nope, but, well, during no further discussion, let's put this to a vote, see how the vote plays out. All in favor of Randy Hall, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd go either way.
Those in favor of Lois Botson.
Aye. I'll buy myself a gift.
Hey, you're not losing for this.
Yeah.
We're all winners. And I know that Lois is, stands ready, will not be going anywhere. I have a feeling other opportunities will be forthcoming. So, well, having heard the vote, I would call it three votes in favor of Randy Hall and one in favor of Lois. So a fairly vote has elected Randy Hall to fill vacancy number one. So we do have an oath of office prepared at this moment in time. It is the mayor's or the city clerk's privilege to engage in that oath. So do you have the paperwork handed with us? So, and can we capture the moment? Perfect, then, Mr. Hall, would you come forward? And we'll swear you in. Repeat after me.
I didn't vote for them.
Repeat after me. Aye.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Aye.
Randall L. Hall.
Randall L. Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
Will faithfully and partially perform.
And discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the city council of the city of Vader.
Of the city council of the city of Vader.
And the state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
According to law.
According to law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Where do we get your signature?
Make sure you hang out afterward, so you can. You signed the wrong place, Mayor. Oh, well, we'll fix it. Don't worry about it. We'll run another copy.
Okay. Well, thank you. And members of the council, I appreciate the action and knew that they were going to come out ahead in this, this evening, either one of the candidates. So now, this was noted, this is all district information. You haven't been briefed at all, and it takes a couple of days for this action to be registered with the state of Washington. So you participate, but you won't be able to vote on any of the matters that we're doing this evening. So with that, and let's now proceed with the other portion of our agenda. Item number two, council to consider the May Day Committee's request for the May Day event on May 4th, 2019. And our city clerk, you note, has included in your packet some of the special event application and conditions of approval that require council action. I hope that you've had a chance to read this, one of which involves the sheriff's department. So I would. Yeah, you want to verify some of the.
Yeah, just frankly, I'm assuming you guys all read the packet, so there's three options at this point. The standard is we need to know, do you approve the event? Are you allowing the event to happen on city property and private property? So we need to know if council approved that. We need to verify that the event, if it is approved, that you guys will let them use the equipment for shutting off the streets and things, and that's on the back, the very last page, and that's typical from previous years. The new portion is this year, they're asking to have a beer garden. So that's a little bit different avenue or different activity than they've had in the past. It requires additional security coverage, and they're requesting that the sheriff's office provide that. They have agreed to pay the increase in the insurance cost for the beer garden, so they're still requesting that the city pay for with the special events line item that we have in our budget. They're still asking that the city pay for the insurance for the rest of the event, which you see the totals in there, but they will cover the additional costs. The May Day funding, I guess, will pay the additional cost for the alcohol event, the alcohol portion of the event. So that's kind of what we have up. And Amida Feeny is here. She's the one whose name is on the application for the representing the May Day Committee. So if you guys have any questions or discussion, and we do have, of course, a member of the sheriff's department, if you want to discuss any of that with them. So, so those are kind of the key things that we're looking for. So you have three, I'm sorry, I didn't explain what the three options were. The three options are, number one, to approve all of it, yes to the beer garden, yes to the pay of the insurance, yes to, or a portion of the insurance, yes to the event and the rental or borrowing of the city's equipment. That's yes all the way around. The second option is yes to everything except the beer garden. And then the third one is no to everything. So those are the three options that I've provided you. You can mix it up however you want. You may think of a different option, and you can do that, but that was the verbiage that I provided for you was those three options.
Thank you for your work on. So we could say yes to everything except the sign tripod?
You could, if you wanted to.
Sign tripod? Sorry.
So then a motion is made. Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We move to approve the mayor's signed 2019 May Day special. We have conditions of approval as written, including authorization to have a beer garden and authorize me to leave the Lewis County Sheriff's Office to provide law and financial services and authorize expenditure of $458.20 for this, from the special event insurance line item budget. So I'm going yes all the way around here.
Well, again, impressive, your voice made it through that. You heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Hunter to approve the event as, as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Schein. Any other council thoughts, suggestions? Hearing none, let's put it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Congratulations. Fantastic, and congratulations to you.
That's the earliest we've got the approval back.
Totally.
Excited.
Absolutely. This is exciting. Okay. Now, item three, council to consider ordinance 2019-03, amending the street weight limit regulations. You know, we've wrestled with this for many months. We gave it some determined thought since our last council meeting and came up with what I think might be a, some verbiage that breaks the logjam that had. And so I submit to you for your recommendation, or your action, the amendments that you see in ordinance 2019-03, and would like the council to engage in appropriate discussion on that.
When I read this, I thought, what a value the attorney is. Because we all tossed this around different ways and this and that, and it comes back. The, the main thing is you can have stuff delivered to your house, but if you decide to log your house and have things shipped out, then you need to get a permit for that. It's exactly what we want. That's exactly what I wanted, is for us to be able to improve our properties, but not decide to have a rock quarry in our properties and ship stuff out, so.
It's a stroke of genius. And it's on, it's on one piece of paper, front and back, which sort of impressed former council members and current, current council members.
I was curious, though, is there a map of alternative routes? Because driving around Vader, you see a whole lot of alternative routes. And everywhere this is, unless there's an alternative route.
Well, the alternative route is to not go in the city limits. The way the ordinance is written is all the streets have the weight limit except for the highway, 7th Street, does not. I believe that's correct, yeah. And so if they're going to go on any of the side streets in the city limits with the heavy loads going out, they would require a permit.
But coming in.
Coming in, no, you can, whatever you want.
Except for Jeff, he can take stuff out.
Yeah, the garbage man is, is, he's one of the exceptions, yeah. The garbage is one of the exceptions.
So with that being said. I move to approve ordinance 2019-03 and ordinance amending ordinance 2014-05, the city's vehicle weight ordinance, to modify the exceptions in section five and to add numbering in preparation for codification and establishing an effective date as written.
Okay, the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance number 2018-03 as written. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Any additional thoughts, comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried, but thank you. That is the start of the discussion. King of the best deserves some applause. Okay, thank you. Now, item number four, council to consider resolution 03-2019, inter-local agreement for shared services. It's not complicated. I know those of you who've been on the council know that this is a regular occurrence. It's kind of a pro forma action, but hopefully you've had a chance to read this and are comfortable with the content.
I move to approve resolution 03-219, authorize the mayor to execute the shared services inter-local agreement with Lewis County and other cities in the county for shared services substantially as written.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Daley submitted a motion to approve resolution 03-2019 as read. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any other thoughts, concerns? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. We've used this in the past, and now we're legal again. Number five, council to consider resolution 04-2019, the income survey data use agreement. And you will note that this was an agreement that needed to be approved before Friday of last week. And so I. And so, I've gone ahead and authorized that. And your action tonight is simply to ratify that action. So, I would await council discussion and action on this.
I move to approve resolution 04-2019, ratifying the mayor's execution of his limits for the CDE income survey data use with a condom that Trica substantially as written.
Okay, I heard the motions submitted by Mr. Daly to approve resolution 04-2019 as written. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Schein. Any other thoughts, deliberations? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Item six, council to consider resolution 05-2019 for the purchase and sale agreement with the city of Orting, Washington. You will recall in our last council meeting that we noted we had an aerator issue. And we researched the fix for that problem and we identified two aerators, three actually, in the city of Orting. And we worked out an agreement where we gone and collected those three aerators and we paid the city of Orting $1 for those three aerators.
It's $1 each?
Nope.
$1.
$1 for all, thirty-three cents.
Do we have a line item for that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, perfect.
Find the money in the budget.
Yeah, that's considerable savings. So, obviously. But, we need to approve the contract for it. So, that's a simple action. But, we have to make it legal. So, I await council action.
I move to approve resolution 05-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the city of Orting for the purchase and surplus aerators at a cost of $1 substantially as written.
Okay, you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Schein to approve resolution 05-2019 as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, item number seven, council to discuss options for the purchase of tractors. As you are well aware, our tractor, which is 28-plus years old and is a Ford, a model Ford, which has highly specialized sized tires. We indicated we'd do some research on it and we'd come up with a price. And we've done some analysis. It's not completely finalized yet. The tires are hard to find and come by.
Well, I got, I got two more bids this afternoon. So, you'll see that everyone that I reached out to finally got back to me.
Oh, okay. Have a chance. Look at that.
It's probably under your stack somewhere.
Yeah.
I do have a couple copies for the public if anybody wants to see. Yes, it's that. If anybody wants to see them. Do you need me to hand you a copy or did you find one?
No, I got it. You got it, yeah. Okay, so, well, the, you note the four estimates vary from, and we failed at all four tires. If we're going to do it, it would be...
Well, the front ones need to be done as well. The rear ones are critical because they have a hold on them, so.
So, you don't need me to read to you the...
I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just explain what we're looking at here. So, we have four different quotes. The first three all are for four tires, two front, two rear. The one for TNT tire also has an additional amount for rear rims, because we are going to need rims. The other guys didn't give me quote prices for the rims. The two rear rims are likely going to need to be replaced because the tires are filled with calcium, a liquid calcium thing, and those are very corrosive and it ends up eating, eating the rims. And so, that, they think that we're probably going to have to replace them. One place gave us a quote of 500, and that was a guesstimate because he wasn't sure exactly which rims we have. But, so that additional amount should probably be added to the other ones as well because we're pretty sure we're going to need rims. What I'm looking for today is for council to authorize purchase of the tires up to a certain amount. And I've provided you guys with a list of the expenditure line items that we have in the budget. And I've highlighted in yellow a couple of line items that I think that we can use to pull some of the money from. I just need to know from you which ones you would prefer I use to pay for this because we don't have a single line item big enough for the tractor maintenance.
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July is one of the ones that I highlighted. We have a couple of the different maintenance line items in the street fund, in the general fund, and in the sewer fund, because all departments use the tractor. So, we can pull some money from all different departments. But, we do have, I mean, typically our tractor maintenance amount is $700 a year, and this obviously isn't going to cover, cover that. One other additional line item that's highlighted on the third page is that we do have money scheduled to transfer out of the street fund at the end of the year in the amount of $1,500 that's supposed to go into equipment reserve fund to, or things like this, and for replacement of equipment. So, I, I didn't want to pull everything out of that because I think it's important that we start, and we've been talking about it for years, and this is the first year we've really had any money put aside to go into that fund. And so, I'd hate to deplete that entire fund. I'd like to still be able to save some. But, we can pull some from here, pull some from there. But, you see tractor maintenance, repair and maintenance of building and equipment. We kind of have it spread all over. If you guys want me to just make a judgment call, that's fine. I'd be happy to do that as far as determining which line items to pull it out of. Or if you have a recommendation or request for where you would like to see it come out of. It won't definitely not come out of a particular fund. But, those are the highlighted ones are the ones that I'm looking at.
Are there any issues right now with the maintenance building that need to be addressed?
I'm not aware of anything immediately that needs, needs to be addressed. I, as far as pulling, just so you know, as far as pulling money out of the sewer fund, I would feel comfortable pulling up to 30% maybe out of the sewer fund of the cost because typically that's what we estimate most of our activities and work. About 30% of John's time is spent doing sewer stuff. So, that's kind of where I would feel comfortable saying approximately 30% of the cost for sewer-related activities. So, I feel comfortable pulling up 30% of what it's going to cost to get tires.
Is that where he uses the tractor? Is over at the sewer?
He does use the tractor down at the sewer plant. Yeah, he uses it at the sewer plant. He also uses it for maintenance and things. And he, you know, he has to keep, keep everything running down there. So, he does use the tractor down there. But, I would feel comfortable up to 30% of the cost maybe coming out of the sewer maintenance line item, you know, for maintenance of equipment and things. And then, the remainder, I would say, definitely needs to come out of street and general fund. So, so, I guess what I'm looking for from you guys is, like I said, a motion that says approve the purchase of tires up to, you know, I would say, I would feel really comfortable with $3,500. I know that's way above what some of these are quoted as, but that would give me some leeway because we're not sure how much the rims are going to cost and if they're going to need to be, if they're going to need to be replaced. And they won't know until we see the rims and can check on whether they can be repaired or not.
Let's make note of the fact that the top one, you'll note, is in Fife.
Right.
And we would have to deliver it.
Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking TNT probably looks the best. They've got, they're, they're in Kelso. They've got the best price on all four tires. I have no idea. I can tell you nothing about the quality of these tires. I know nothing about it. I have just been asking them to give me quotes. And Goodyear was the only one that said that they had more than one type of tire that would fit that tractor. So, they have a premium tire and then just an average-grade tire. I can't tell you what the difference is between them, but everyone else only had one type of tire that would fit.
Difference is about $600 something.
Right. Yeah, so.
Two things. One, TNT, I've done work with them and they were outstanding. Very impressed with them.
You know, they had all, only positive reviews. They had like 35 reviews online and there were zero of them that were negative. There were just numbered five stars and four stars and that's it, all really positive.
Yeah.
Usually, you see one of two negatives, but...
Yeah, they, I've been America Tire guy for 10 years and these guys just rocked it. But, anyway, so I recommend TNT. The other thing that I wanted to ask, was anybody else thinking about taking on the Fourth of July? Because to me, that's a piggy bank that we could use for this. But, if somebody else had, was wanting to do it, then I wouldn't recommend it at all.
Doesn't sound like it.
So, funding would be available, so.
If council was okay with that, yeah.
We can do this without touching Fourth of July, by peeling a little bit from here and there and get to $3,500.
Yeah, I just did it.
Crunch the memory.
Just did it.
Well, it is possible. So, good, counsel, if you...
So, I'll make a motion that Jill, what?
Authorize the mayor.
Oh, the mayor. Sorry. That the mayor gets new tires for the tractor and spends up to $3,500.
Can you say anything about the line items? Where you want that to come from?
Well, then, you should make this motion.
You don't have to. You can, you can just...
It's all out of general fund, right? And then, this is all just a...
Yeah, I do 30% out of sewer and 70% out of the, the general street fund.
That's what I did.
Yeah.
That's what you did.
So, if you're okay with that, then you don't need to say anything about it. I just wanted to make sure that if you had any specifics.
So, do I need to add that to the motion?
Let me see if I captured it. So, we heard the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons to authorize the mayor to proceed to utilize certain line items to come up with no more than $3,500 for the replacement of two front, two back and rims for the tractor. Did I capture?
Yes. And if you can get chrome spinners?
Okay, I will ask. I don't know if they make chrome hags.
I will strike that from there.
Yes, I was just joking.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Schein. Any last or final deliberation on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. I will send them forth and we will keep that tractor safe and operational. With that, then, it is now time for public comment.
We have two. Cindy Radhook is listed first.
Okay.
Cindy Radhook, 1027 Street. First, welcome, Mr. Holland. Good luck. Second, I mean, that makes sense. Second, the playground is now finished up at the school. And they put on the Facebook today that kids are welcome to use it. They just asked, they treat it with respect, and they only use it after school hours. So, that's just for your information. Also, I talked to the WISDOT people in the last week or two and they said that Lackamas Creek Bridge replacement is coming up. They expect to start it on spring and summer, late spring, early summer of this year. Maybe you could put that in the next, one of these or on the website or something to give them information. Go to their website. They'll tell you what the workaround is for that and how long they expect us to be inconvenienced. Thank you, council, for getting that, one of those things finished on the overweight vehicle. I know that people bring in rock and dirt and cement, and that's a nice thing that they are not breaking in ordinance when they do that. And my last thing is, is it possible, we talked about the disabled people getting a discount, and I asked Mr. Parsons earlier in the wake about this, is it possible to use some funds from the sewer fund to help offset those fees for disabled people? You know, Mr. Daly had a rightful concern that it would make other people's sewer fees go up if you took money for disabled people, if they got a discount. But, maybe if you set aside that $3,000 out of the sewer fund for disabled people and not raise the other people's regular, I don't want to say regular people, but other people's bills, maybe you could take some funds out of the sewer fund to help offset that. I don't know what the rules are for the sewer fund, but if you could use that money for the disabled discount instead of raising other people's sewer bills, that might be a possibility. And the red light is still red. So, I think they might actually have fixed it this time. So, yay.
Thank you. Excellent comments. The next people.
Linda Newton, Vader, Washington. As Judy and I were going around taking the flyers for the citywide cleanup and May Day celebration, we kind of took the liberty of identifying families here in Vader that don't have smoke detectors. We've identified six families that don't have smoke detectors in their home. Most of them have children. I can't believe this, but they don't, they don't have them. The Red Cross is going to give free smoke detectors to families that don't have them. So, I'm asking anybody that if you identify anybody that doesn't have a smoke detector, please get with me so I can get with the Red Cross so we can get them one. And, you know, we've had major fires here. I can't believe people don't have smoke detectors in their home or carbon monoxide detectors also. So, that's kind of been one of the things I've been working on. But, if you let me know if you identify anybody that doesn't have one, we'll get them one.
Okay, thank you. Excellent public comment. All right, then, our last official item, any elected official comments?
All right. So, as I was, this last week, I started thinking about this infamous stick pile. Actually, I've been thinking about it a lot for a long time. And the property that I would like to see us use is the one by the water plant, north of the water plant. The so-called problem with that property is there's a whole bunch of timber on it. Well, a whole bunch of trees. But, we can call it timber. And I just got this email to Jill like minutes before the meeting. So, I'll make you guys a copy of this, or if you can make them a copy of it. Basically, it breaks down, the same guy that did the trees before in the center of that property a few years back, it's the same guy that I talked to to go out and look at it again. And I'm just going to skip down because you guys can read all of this. But, the percentage that I am bidding are 60% to the city of Vader and 40% to him, which would give us approximately $40,000 somewhere. With that $40,000, we could get the chipper that we need or we can do some other stuff. Out of that $40,000, though, I would prefer, it's a three-acre parcel. I would love to see half of it replanted so that in 20, 30, and 60 years from now, they can tap into it again. So, anyway, I will make copies of this for you guys and then we can discuss it. Hopefully, we can discuss it next council meeting.
Do we have any estimates on what it would cost to bust a road in there?
Well, they would do that when they logged it, too.
Grab them and everything.
Oh, do they? I, I don't know. So, if they, I would think that they need to get in and out. So if they, I would think that they need to get in and out of there, so. But out of the $40,000, I thought that we could build, we could do a nice little thing up there and maybe get a chipper that hooks onto the back of the tractor, because I've seen those for about $6,000 to $7,000, a three-point chipper. So, anyway, it's a start in that direction.
And it would be in the county, right? Because maybe you could.
Oh, thank you. So, so my first thought was the county, if we could have a piece of property in the county, then all the extra stuff could get burnt, because it's in the county. I don't know all the logistics of it, but I thought it would be an option because we're out and away. So that was the reason for that property.
Interesting.
Never thought about the whole county part at all.
The most intriguing. So, well, okay, this is council comment. So, any other comment from council? Then, thank you all for participating, and congratulations, Mr. Hall. We will, this council meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM.